43-3, before a school corporation may enter into a lease with a nonprofit building corporation, the school corporation must conduct a hearing regarding the execution of the proposed lease agreement and whether the rental to be paid to the lesser building corporation under the proposed lease is a fair and reasonable rental for the proposed improvements. That being said, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Barker.
Thank you, President Hathaway. We would like to reiterate what was publicly disclosed at last month's regular school board meeting. At this time, the school corporation is not moving forward with the construction of a career and technical education facility. Pursuant to Indiana Code 20-47-3-10, it is therefore being proposed that the lease agreement, which is under consideration at this meeting, be modified by agreement with our building corporation in order to reduce the proposed lease rental payments from what was previously published in the notice of this hearing and therefore reduce the amount of the proposed bond issue. We'll now hear from Mr. Basham about the proposed projects related to the lease which are moving forward at this time.
Thank you. A few updates from that. Just to reiterate what Mr. Barker said, the CTE project is not constructed. So due to the timing, that had to be a part of the entire issuance. So originally, the document said approximately 77.8 million, and then now that got pared down once the bids were received. So we actually took the transportation center out to bid on November 12th, got great numbers back. We were very pleased with what came in. Came in under our original budget, and the total issuance that you'll now see in the documents will be $26 million. So again, 77.8 now to 26 with just the transportation center being the construction component of this. Probably the biggest thing to point out in the process, we did bid out an alternate for the canopies. That came in favorable. It was a good amount and number. However, just looking at the totality and what we have going on, we decided that was in our best interest to go ahead and reject the alternate at this time and not do the canopies. Most importantly, from the financing side of this, we will issue bonds at the end of February, early March, depending on where the market is and what it looks like on that day. And then again, we've already approved last year's tax rate, and we're still able to maintain that. So for 2026, tax rate will still maintain at .8797. We'll continue to look at that because the word "maintain" and "tax rate" is certainly different now with SEA1, but at least for '26, this project will still fall into that. If you look at the attached documents, the schedule of financing, actually, what we did to maintain that rate was have a higher payment up front to pay it off quicker and then maintain that debt service rate. So moving forward, again, in terms of the rate, we're going to maintain the debt service component of the rate, keep that steady so we can have those rolling impacts again as each phase of SEA1 comes in through 2031. So at this time, again, we'll continue to look at the rate, but we were really pleased with the bids and the ability to have that big chunk come off right away and then have those steady payments.
Great. Next is board comments. I guess I appreciate that we came in under budget and were intentional with not taking that alternate bid, so thanks. Are there any other board comments? Okay. Next is the audience participation part. Is there anybody that signed up to speak? Okay. Now, we need to adjourn the lease hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Vogt, second by Ms. Schlotter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Next is the regular meeting, and we have the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Schlotter, second by Ms. Chafee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Next up, we are going to recognize the state cheerleading champions, so I'll turn it over to Wayne Barker. Mr. Barker.
The Indiana Association of School Principals hosted the Indiana Cheerleading Championship on Saturday, November 8th, at Newcastle High School. The Carroll High School Varsity Competition Cheerleaders are the 2025 Varsity A Division State Champions. This is the fifth consecutive varsity state championship title for Carroll Cheerleading. It also marks the first time in Indiana cheerleading history that, in the varsity division, that anyone has won five state championships in a row. In total, Carroll Cheerleading has won seven state championship titles along with four runner-up titles and one national runner-up title, all in the last nine years. So at this time, we want to recognize these amazing coaches and student athletes. I'm going to call your name and ask you to come forward. You'll be presented a certificate by the board members. Once we have everyone up here, and I'm through reading names, I'll come up and join you, and we'll take a photo, okay? But congratulations to all of you. It's amazing what you have accomplished, and I know, obviously, you're very talented, but you've also had to work incredibly hard to achieve at this level, and we're very proud of you. Coaches, Elizabeth Sturgis, Kim Fransen, Maddie Reichardt, and Kami Gardner. Then our student athletes, Bree Chevron, Alyssa Fuller, Paige Gardner. We have some people absent, so when you come through, if you would, just help them with your names so that you get the right certificate. Paige Gardner, Avery Harper, Addison Johnstone, Abby Mahal, Ella Minner, Danielle Meyer, Kaylee Peters, Georgia Polly, Emmy Shealy, Taylor Thuss, Lason Miles, Ella Nguyen, Caleb Van Meter, and Elena Rizvic. Congratulations, everyone. Congratulations.
(applause)
(inaudible).
We'll move in the hall.
All right. Let's go to the hallway. Aaron, did you want to join us and take some photos as well? You're welcome. Good to meet you. Right.
(inaudible).
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 dense on the east side of our district is Maple Creek's even slightly bigger than Carroll Middle right now. Those white lines outline our eight elementary boundaries as they currently sit. So, right now, as a reminder, Arkola, Hickory Center, and Hunter Town for the most part feed 100% into Carroll Middle School. There are a few exceptions with a few of our special ed programs, small numbers, but for the most part, those schools wholly feed into Carroll Middle School. Right now, Aspen Meadow, that 145 represents, there are 145 students at Carroll Middle right now who attended Aspen Meadow. There are 180 students at Carroll Middle who attended Eel River. When you look at Maple Creek, Cedar Canyon, Oakview, Perry Hill, those are pretty much pure feeders into Maple Creek Middle School right now. Aspen Meadow, with Aspen Meadow, there are currently 130 middle school kids at Maple Creek who came from Aspen Meadow, so that split with Aspen is almost 50/50 right now. You know, it's like 48, 52, 47, 53, something like that. It's pretty close to half and half. There are 18 students right now at Maple Creek who went to Eel River. And so every year right now, as we're doing sixth grade orientation and going to talk at the elementary buildings to the students who are getting ready to transition to middle school, we have about nine to 10 kids every year from Eel River who leave their friends at Eel River and go to Maple Creek. And I'll talk about why that is here in a few moments. So as Mr. Barker mentioned, we want to plan for future growth, so hopefully we can draw some boundary lines that last a while and don't require us to make changes to where people go to school for as long as we can. The previous map that I've shared with you, you know, we talked about this over the last week or two. I've been in the district 16 years. I was at Maple Creek before this position, and I don't remember really ever messing with this line for middle school. I think we had some new neighborhoods that came online over time, and before people were living in those neighborhoods, we made some changes. But for the most part, our middle school boundary line, I think, has stayed pretty close to the same since Maple Creek opened 25 years ago. So, in that vein, as Mr. Barker mentioned, our plan is to open or to divide up the boundary line so that Carroll Middle School is a little bit smaller than Willow Creek and Maple Creek. To do that, we are proposing that the Fins, which is at the corner of Hathaway and Hand Road, we are proposing to hit the Fins, go to Carroll Middle School as well as Broad Acres. And they're currently sitting right there, and we're proposing a smaller enrollment size for Carroll Middle as it opens because we know these neighborhoods, the dirt's moving, houses are starting to be built, and it's going to be pretty soon that enrollment's going to start to creep up at Carroll Middle School and approach the size of the other two buildings. In terms of elementary boundaries, so that really isn't a change for the Fins and Broad Acres is right now because they're already in Carroll Middle's boundaries. For Eel River, we are proposing we move the Fins to Eel River. Currently, the Fins is right there on the line between Eel River and Aspen Meadow. That plot of land is currently within the boundaries of Aspen Meadow. Aspen Meadow, though, is quite a bit larger than Eel River is right now in terms of student enrollment. I think they have about 200 more students at Aspen Meadow than they do at Eel River. And so before these homes even start to get built and before we start to move students who start in one elementary building, we are proposing that we redraw the lines so that the Fins will feed into Eel River where they have more room for growth, and that helps us protect Aspen Meadow from hitting that capacity or overcapacity too soon. At the same time, you'll see that those yellow blocks there on the screen, kind of the L in the bottom left-hand corner, the northeast corner of Hathaway Road and Hand Road. There are some homes that are right now, however, there are no elementary students in those homes currently that attend Aspen. And the same thing with that little yellow block at the top. We chose those houses because those houses, number one, it'll create a nice clean line when we draw our boundary lines, but also those homes have driveways that exit onto Hand Road. So those houses on the east side of Hand Road, between Hathaway and then Woods Road would be there at the top, they have Hand Road addresses. And we can move those homes now while we don't affect any students who are currently attending Aspen and go ahead and move those students to Eel River as well, and that'll put that whole section, that whole portion into Eel River's boundaries. I mentioned earlier that we have 18 students at Maple Creek who attended Eel River. The reason for that is when we redrew the lines the last time for our elementary buildings when we opened Aspen Meadow, the Lakes and Coves of Brook Crossing used to attend Oakview. We redrew the lines and moved this neighborhood to Eel River, but we didn't redo the middle school lines at the same time. And so this little section here, which is kind of the furthest, probably the furthest, most east part of Eel River's boundary, it kind of gets clipped off, and those students stayed at Maple Creek. So every year now, we have just these very few students at Eel River who don't move with their peers to Carroll Middle School. So we're proposing while we make these changes, we go ahead and correct this and make this change so that these students at Eel River in the future can continue to transition into middle school with their friends that they go to elementary school with. And then lastly, Kel Road, there's been a lot of development in that area of the district the last few years. Some new homes have gone up along Kel Road. We've ended up with some of these oddities and situations where we have homes on Kel Road where some of the houses go to Hunter Town and some of the houses go to Cedar Canyon and people that are right next to each other. The way it sits right now, the homes on Kel Road with Kel Road addresses, the only homes with kids, they all go to Cedar Canyon. And so we are proposing we make this change right now as well so that all of those homes go to Cedar Canyon, and we don't have all these kids on the same street going to two different elementary schools. And I'll pass it over to Dr. Bidding to talk about our four proposals.
Thank you, Dr. Toller. As Dr. Toller said, the lines and the roads kind of are influential as we look at the boundaries and when you talk about busing efficiencies. And so when we started with option one, we kind of looked at what if we looked at just middle school boundaries and didn't really take into consideration elementary boundaries? So we call this, option one is the no feeders option. And what we did is we kind of, again, looked at the major thoroughfares of roads that we were going to have buses going kind of both directions on and just gave us clean boundary lines and kind of looked at it from the most efficient view of this through the transportation lens. Now, again, as the map shows and according, you know, Dr. Toller said, the white outlines are the elementary boundaries, and so you can see very clearly that there are four of our elementaries do get divided in this option. And so there would be a split for Arkola, Hunter Town, Cedar Canyon, and Aspen Meadow would be four elementaries that wouldn't move as a group into a middle school. I do want to go back on this slide. I think you have this map, Dr. Toller.
I do.
Okay, so in the presentation, I should have pointed this out. So in the presentation, you can see, if you click on the map, it takes you to a different page where you can actually zoom in, and I believe there's even a potential way to type in an address, but you can zoom way down and look at for your house, your boundaries, and kind of show you where you actually are impacted. So on all these options, when this slide deck becomes available, if you click on the map, it'll take you to a, I would say, an interactive map or a better map to zoom in on. And so, again, the example there that Dr. Toller is showing right now, so thank you for that. Now we'll go back to, transition back to my computer here. So what we did for all these options is we created a slide that, again, as Mr. Barker talked about, kind of hopefully organized some of the guiding principle information and focused our view of this. And so as you look at this, column one, I don't want to make any assumptions, CMS Carroll Middle School, MCMS Maple Creek Middle School, and WCMS Willow Creek Middle School. And so, column two shows enrollment, and that would be the enrollment, the projected enrollment for next year based upon the information we currently have. And then the third column, as Mr. Barker talked about, one of the metrics we look at is the free and reduced lunch percentages. And the fourth column we're looking at is special education percentages. I do want to point out, we are really excited about the construction of Willow Creek and the spaces we have constructed for our applied skills students to be able to move into. And so our applied skills students in middle school will be going to Willow Creek. And at this time, there are 36 of those students projected in that program, middle school program, next year. And so those 36 students, as we go through all of these enrollment numbers, those 36 students are included in the numbers that you see. And so, again, we're excited for those students to have the space they're going to be occupying at Willow Creek next year. And so as you look at this slide deck, you can see that for option one of the no feeders, again, very efficient transportation-wise, but to Dr. Toller's point, Carroll Middle is opening a little larger than we want because of the two large developments that will be feeding that school. If you look at the socioeconomic disparity, and also, you're going to notice the first three slides, the sped numbers are very similar to this. And so as we look at the guiding principles, again, four schools will be divided, but again, the benefit to this one is definitely the transportation efficiencies. So as you look at option two, we kind of went from, well, okay, we didn't look at any feeders, to what if we went to just all feeders? So every elementary fed a middle school. And so you can see the map there. On this, the blue is featuring Carroll Middle School. That would be Arkola, Eel River, and Hickory Center. The green for Maple Creek is Cedar Canyon, Oakview, and Perry Hill. And the orange for Willow Creek is Aspen Meadow and Hunter Town. So if you look at this slide here, the enrollment data provides a good starting point for Carroll Middle School. That 558, that gives that plenty of room for growth for those two large developments. However, there is some disparity in the starting points for Willow Creek and Maple Creek. We'd like that number to be a little closer. And so if you look at just the general enrollment information, good starting point for Carroll Middle, but the Willow Creek, Maple Creek, little bit of disparity there. This option is, does provide for some disparities or differences in the socioeconomic free and reduced status as well. The sped population number looks very similar to the slide before that. Now, again, benefit, we're not splitting any elementaries up. This is an efficient mode of transportation. It's not as efficient as the no feeders option before, but there's some efficiencies to this. But again, with enrollment is where the disparity lies. So if you kind of have the two ends of the spectrum with a no feeder and an all feeder, these next two options, we look at a minimal split. And so we started with an Aspen Meadow split. Geographically, it makes a lot of sense because it's in kind of the geographic center of our district. It could potentially feed any of the three middle schools. However, if you look at the split that we came up with here, the blue of Carroll Middle remains the same with Arkola, Eel River, and Hickory Center. Maple Creek would take in, excuse me, Maple Creek would take in part of Aspen Meadow, and it would continue to conclude Oakview and Perry Hill. And Willow Creek would comprise of Hunter Town, Cedar Canyon, and the other part of Aspen Meadow. And so when you look at the data slide for this, the starting enrollment for Carroll Middle's not going to change as the slide before, so still at that 558, a really nice number with the future development there. For statistical, for numbers, excuse me, the enrollment data, this is a very nice blend of Willow Creek and Maple Creek, especially when you keep in mind the 36 applied skills students factoring into the Willow Creek number. This option is the most balanced with the socioeconomic diversities. And it does, again, as the initial option one, option two, option three slides go, it's a nice balance with the special education population percentages as well. When you look at the feeder splits, you know, currently Aspen Meadow is split, it currently is split between, as Dr. Toller pointed out, between Carroll Middle and Maple Creek. And so if we're going to split, it's a building that's used to that as well, the way it's functioning. There are some efficiencies with this transportation. Again, nothing's going to come close to the very first slide, but this one does provide an efficient way of transporting our students. And our final option, option four, we would look at splitting Cedar Canyon. Now, again, if you look at the map, we really kind of split Cedar Canyon into a north and south. And so, again, Carroll Middle doesn't change, still Arkola, Eel River, and Hickory Center. Maple Creek now, this is where you would have Oakview and Perry Hill with the southern part of Cedar Canyon's district. And then Willow Creek would have Hunter Town, Aspen Meadow, in the northern part of Cedar Canyon's district. Again, same enrollment, starting point for Carroll Middle, which is a nice number for us. This does provide some general enrollment balance when you look at just the enrollment numbers between Maple Creek and Willow Creek. However, as you can see, the disparity does lie in the socioeconomic, and while it's not a lot, this is also one that does give the greatest gap in the sped percentage differences as well. Again, very similar efficiencies in transportation as the Aspen Meadow split, and it is one elementary having to make a split. And so now Mr. Barker will kind of wrap this up for us.
Thank you, Dr. Bidding. This next slide is just an overview of all of those options that you've seen. So we tried to put the information onto one slide so we could make some comparisons. And as you look at that in option one, and again, that's the no feeders option, that's where we just drew middle school boundaries without impacting, without looking at the elementary boundaries. This one creates decent balance, but there are great disparities in the free and reduced lunch rates from 16.3% to 30.5%, and it also required four elementary schools to be split, but did provide us the most efficient of the four options in transportation. Option two, which is the all feeders option, this is the least balanced option that we had, and it also provided for great disparities in the free and reduced rate there of 15.5% to 30.8%. However, it did not create splits for any elementary schools as they transitioned to middle schools, and it does have an efficient transportation. Option three, the current Aspen Meadows split, so this is, this provides the best balance for the schools, especially when accounting for the applied skills students, as Dr. Bidding mentioned. It has the best range for free and reduced lunch rates of 20.8% to 30.2%, and does maintain that current split of Aspen Meadow and provides an efficient transportation. And then Cedar Canyon is balanced in enrollment, but does create disparities, again, in the free and reduced from 16.3% to 30.2%. Creates a new split for Cedar Canyon and does provide an efficient transportation system. So we look to what's next, I've shared this already. Tonight, we're presenting it to you and to the community, and then tomorrow, we will share this information with families along with the survey. That survey will be open through January 5th, and then we will share that information at the next school board meeting. And then finally, we talked about this already, so I'm not going to spend much time on that. We spent time on those first four guiding principles tonight, and then now we need to hear from our families. So we're anxious to get that out to them and get their feedback, and then we'll bring that back to the next meeting and share it with the public, share it with the board before we make a final recommendation. For people that are wanting information, Mrs. Valdez has done an incredible job of building a website for this rebalancing plan. All of this information is there. If you access that information from your phone, it will actually show you your location. So if you do that from your home, you'll be able to see exactly which option, where your home lies in each option. I think that'll make it very convenient for families. And then all of the other information is there as well that will help us to guide this. So at that, at this time, that completes our presentation, but we are open to any questions or feedback from the board that there might be.
Is this with updated numbers from Dr. McKibben?
It is. The best way to say that, we have updated numbers from Dr. McKibben for the current boundaries. So since we didn't know where, what the new boundaries might be, we didn't ask him to do them for all four options, but he has updated numbers for the current boundaries, and we have taken those into consideration when we've looked at, should we make any other changes specifically to elementary boundaries? We've had concern over Aspen Meadow being stressed and being closer to capacity than the other elementary schools, and what we've learned from that recent McKibben update that honestly, we only got within the last week, I think that enrollment is going to start to trickle down over the next 10 years. Cedar Canyon is going to go up some, so we felt comfortable making these kind of cleanup changes to elementary boundaries based upon what we got back from Dr. McKibben.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
I was going to ask, we talk about the number with enrollment. Can you please remind me about the actual capacity of the three middle schools in regard to, are they close to equal with the number of students that they can hold?
They are. They were, they were basically designed with the same footprint. There are some subtle changes, but they're basically, for all intents and purposes, the same footprint, and they'll accommodate the same number of students. We have a few classrooms that we made a little bit larger than other classrooms based upon what we found and how they've been used, but they will have the same capacity.
I got a couple here. With the, with the survey, do we have an expected number of responses we want to get for that?
It's a great question. Survey responses sometimes are, one of the things that Mrs. Valdez has talked about, she wants to send out a reminder weekly. We're going to collect email addresses so that we make sure we're actually getting the responses from families and not others. No one else will be asked to participate. We're not, we're not offering our opinions in the survey. Staff will not be offering unless they're also families. But in terms of what's a good response, I hope we have a very high response, and I would think that it would be higher than some surveys that we put out just because of interest by families.
Well, here's, here's my, I should have started with this, I guess. Are the timeline that you presented, and I apologize for not asking these questions earlier, but sometimes things come to you as you go, that does, the timeline where we have the January recommendations, is there a reason that, for that January 26th date other than just it fits the timing? The reason I'm asking that is, if we have, I know my month of December is not the, is pretty busy, most peoples are, with vacations and everything else that's going on with holidays and all that. And my concern is if we don't have the survey results we want, not the results, but the number of responses, does that, are we tied to that January 26th date for any reason? That's really what I'm getting at.
Yeah, it's a good question. I think we need to do everything we can to maintain that date because of what we've tried to put in place for the staffing of the building, because then the next thing that we'll have to do is start to then create schedules for all those students. And that typically happens at that next month of February.
Okay.
As we move into the next part of the school year so that students know what courses they're in, who their teachers are going to be. And then we also want to be able to provide for all of those orientation activities. You heard Dr. Bidding in the last meeting talk about all the plans that she has for getting students accustomed to going to Willow Creek and adjusting to that change. So that's, that's part of all of that plan that we laid out. So like you, I hope we get a good turnout on the responses so that we have good data to use.
Okay. So I would, so I guess my thought behind that would be, weekly may need to be, twice a week may need to be, if we're not getting the results we want, we want to make sure we can get them. Second thing is, does, well, second thing, does it make sense to make changes, those little tweaks you talked about, until we know what the overall big plan is going to be?
I think the good part about what most of those changes were tonight was that they don't have an impact on students. Almost all of those, because of who lives in those homes now, they're not going to have an impact except for really the Lakes and Coves of Brooks Crossing, which has an impact on 18 current sixth and seventh graders. The rest of those changes really have no impact on current students.
Okay. And the other thing I remember from, this isn't, this just came to me as you were saying that, is, is Dr. McKibben said that neighborhoods transition. And that's one thing we need to look at and maybe ask him about is, where are these neighborhoods in transition? Maybe that's what his updated thing did, I don't know, but the, that's critical. As you look at Pine Valley, Pine Valley is an example of where it's transitioned out to seniors and is going to start transitioning again, and other neighborhoods might start to do the same thing. My second, my last point, I think, my last question is, when we talk about the last part of the cost to this in transportation, and you say most efficient, 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 is there, given the fact that the community wants us to spend our dollars as wisely as possible, is there a way to put a dollar amount to the difference in that transportation cost? Because if that's a huge different number-wise, that may influence my thought process on what we do. If it's minimal, it may not, I don't know. But is there a way to do that, I guess, is the biggest question?
I think it would be difficult until we know, until we actually run it and know which option it is because of the amount of man-hours and calculation that it would take to be able to do that, because we'll first have to then put all those students in there, which we have based off those numbers, but then we would have to run the actual route finding for each of those routes and then calculate miles driven and all of that. I can tell you, working with Mrs. Hoffman, she felt like she could do all of those options in somewhat of a reasonable way for each of them. But like you, when we went into this, one of my questions was, we may have to choose the most efficient one for our district based off the fact of our operations fund feeds the transportation. But in talking to her, and she's here, but she, she felt that she could accommodate each of those other three somewhat the same as, nothing would be as efficient as the no feeders because it's based on major thoroughfares, and that's where we drew the lines. But the others, she felt like were somewhat similar.
Yeah, and I guess that's what I'm trying to get. I figured the similar ones would be similar, I'll say that, the efficient ones. I guess what I'm trying to get is, what's that most efficient? Is that $1 million? Is that $200,000? Is that $20,000? That's the number I'm trying to get to, because I think it's important that we look at that if it's easily doable, and I don't know the answer to how hard that is to create that mapping, or if that's just putting it in to the system. And I'm not trying to give anybody any undue work, that's not what I'm trying to do, but we owe it to the taxpayer mixer we're doing.
Right. Let us have a conversation on that tomorrow and see what we can bring back to you.
That'd be great. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. And next up is Personnel Report with Mr. DiPremio.
Thank you, President Hathaway. As indicated, I'll be referencing the Personnel section of your packet. I'd like to start at item 8.4 for Retirement. We do have a number of retirements that I'd like to just take a brief moment and highlight to them and their career. Alan Bodenstein at Hickory Center. Alan joined NACS in 2001 as a PE teacher at Hickory Center. During the next 24 and a half years, Alan served as adaptive PE teacher at multiple buildings, student council advisor for Hickory Center, cross-country coach at Hickory Center, girls soccer coach at Carroll Middle School, building association representative and association president, and instrumental in creating and coaching the Unified Athletic Program, which is the champions together. Prior to NACS, Alan spent three years teaching in New York for a total of 20, for a total of 27.5 years in education. Lisa Fechter in Transportation. Lisa joined the NACS Transportation Team in 2012 as a Transportation Secretary. She transitioned to Driver in 2017. All told, Lisa has served NACS families for 13 and a half years. Karen Livingston at Hunter Town. Karen started with NACS in 2006 as an instructional assistant at Oakview Elementary. She transitioned to a teacher at Oakview in 2009, where she spent one year before transferring to Hunter Town. She has been at Hunter Town the last 16 years for a total of 20 years' service to NACS students and their families. Sherry Shoda at Aspen Meadow. Sherry started at NACS in 2007 as a Special Needs Instructional Assistant at Hunter Town Elementary. She transitioned to a Special Needs Teacher in 2009 at Hunter Town, where she spent 12 years. In 2021, Sherry transferred to Aspen Meadow, where she has spent the last five years for a total of 19 years at Northwest Allen County Schools. And lastly, Amy Subsack at Aspen Meadow. Amy began her career at NACS in 1987 at Perry Hill Elementary, where she taught for 27 years. In 2014, Amy moved to Hickory Center, teaching there until 2021, when she transferred to Aspen Meadow. Amy has been at Aspen Meadow for the last five years and retires this year after a total of 39 years at Northwest Allen County Schools. We wish to thank each of these individuals for their commitment and years of service to NACS and our students, wishing them nothing but the very best in their future endeavors. Recommendation highlights for this evening's meeting include three certified recommendations and nine classified recommendations. It is recommended that items 8.1 through 8.11 and the Personnel Report be approved as presented.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vogt, second by Ms. Schlatter. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Thank you, Mr. DiPremio. And next up is Curriculum, Instruction, and Technology with Dr. Toller.
Yeah, thank you, President Hathaway. We have just a few professional development activities we're requesting board approval this evening. A few items to point out, Liz Mitchell's New House Training, I apologize, we are bringing that retroactively. The Board of Previously Approved New House Training, that's reading, reading strategies for- for our English language learners, which has been a great program for our district. Liz is a new teacher in our district this year. I believe Liz was told which form... Was told the wrong form to fill out for PD, and so we didn't get it in time for the last board agenda. So I apologize, but Liz did need to attend that training. Also, Tim Dale is requesting approval to attend the COSA National Conference. It's a computer science conference. Tim and a team from our district typically attends the Indiana COSA Conference. Tim's registration's covered this year. He is requesting approval from the board. However, I can tell you, Tim and I have had conversations. He's thinking about actually using that budget for other people on his team to attend the state conference again. So he's asking for approval. So he's able to attend, but he and I are reviewing that, and it's kind of up in the air if Tim's going to do that or not. And then also, Terry Top is requesting to attend the Women in Education Conference with IASP. That's the Indiana Association for School Principals. This is a new conference this year for women leaders in Indiana this year... And ISP has a history of really great PD and conferences for school leaders and great speakers and a good experience, so I'm hopeful for Mrs. Top for that. So having stated that, it is recommended that the professional learning and training activities be approved as presented.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Chafee, second by Ms. Jamison. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
And then secondly, this evening, Cleve Million, principal of Carroll High School, is requesting approval to add courses to the Carroll High School Course Offering Guide for the 26-27 school year. I do want to point out, these new courses are necessary in ensuring that students are able to meet the newly designed diploma requirements. So just a few items to point out in Mr. Million's request. With the new diploma requirements, which will be for our current freshman class and those entering high school after this point, it used to be that they had to have six credits in science. They now have to have seven credits. And in those seven credits, one has to be a computer science credit. And they also have to have two STEM-focused credits. And so when you look at the request from Mr. Million, you'll see several computer science-based courses. That's in response to that new requirement for our high school kiddos. And then also, there's more flexibility in math now for students graduating high school. It used to be students had to have two credits in Algebra I, two credits in geometry, and two credits in Algebra II. Students now have to have two credits in Algebra I, one credit in personal finance, and then four additional math credits, so they get a lot more flexibility. And so I was happy to see, when you look at the request from Mr. Million, there's a course called Technical Math, and this course is designed around how math applies to real-world work-related problems and solving real-world problems in the work environment. And so I thought that was a nice addition to our course guide. And then lastly, there's a course through Indiana University. If you remember, we partnered with Indiana University for our new Indiana College Core, ICC, which again supports our high school diploma requirements and our SEALS. And so having stated all of that, it is recommended that the course additions be approved as presented.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion by Ms. Schlotter, second by Ms. Chafee. Are there any comments or questions? Do we have staff currently able to teach these new courses?
That is a great question. You could actually... Mr. Million has been reminding his staff frequently for these new required computer science courses. Current staff members can actually make a stipend of $500 to get certified to teach these courses. And so he's been reminding, especially our math-science people at the high school, hey, this is maybe something you want to add to your license, now's the time to do it. And so we have been looking at ways we can have some flexibility with who teaches these courses as well. But that's definitely part of this puzzle.
Right. Okay. Awesome. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. All right. Thank you, Dr. Toller. Next up is the Business Report with Mr. Basham.
Thank you. Up first tonight, we have our Business Insurance Package for next school year, or next calendar year, I should say. This was our first year working with USI, and we were very pleased with them in our interview process and enough that we were excited to work with them, and they certainly delivered very, very positive news and experience working with them. They spent a lot of time and hours going out, getting multiple responses. We worked collaboratively with them, several visits in our school buildings, which I would be inappropriate not to say a big thanks to the high school, Carroll Middle School, going around and looking in those buildings and some of the things that they were able to show that we do to limit risk, just a fantastic job by those custodial staffs at those buildings. So we really appreciate that. They really ended up with three major proposals, and all three proposals came back with six-figure savings from what we are currently spending. So in a world where we constantly see an increase, and we have certainly felt that for the last several years, all three proposals that we got back were very, very significantly improved on what we were doing. So really appreciate the work that we did. In the end, in this process, we had over a 25% premium reduction on our property program. We were able to actually double the cyber coverage for less than a 15% increase in that, which is fantastic, as that's certainly an area where we always have concerns. And then large reductions on our workers' comp, auto, and crime. So really appreciated the work that they did on our behalf and just collaborating with us. So been a great partner from the get-go, and we're excited as to what they were able to do. But in the end, we were able to save just under $240,000 from what we spent last year. So in the initial projections of what we were going to spend, that number is probably closer into reality of over a $350,000 decrease than what potentially we were expecting. So really amazing results that we were able to get. So in the end, we are recommending a switch in a few folks. So I do recommend the Business Insurance Package through USI for 2026 Business Insurance for $1,023,402, which includes package liability, automotive general liability with Wright Specialty, property with Chubb, workers' compensation with United Heartland, and cyber risk liability with Travelers, and the agency fee with USI, which is actually part of the package. So there's not a separate line item for that if you look at that. But do recommend that that is approved as presented.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vogt, second by Ms. Schlotter. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
I do want to point out CJ Mills is our main contact there at USI, did attend tonight. So again, just appreciate the work that they did on that, so thank you. All right. Up next, I do have a resolution to adjust the 2025 budget. This is a yearly task that we complete because, again, as we know, we're planning the budget a year and a half in advance. What this does is allows us to move appropriation around into the appropriate categories where we actually expended them. So I do recommend the resolution to adjust the 25 budget as presented.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion by Ms. Schlotter, second by Ms. Chafee. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay. Up next, I do have the SRO Agreement. This is our annual renewal that we do at this time of year. Nothing in the document has changed other than the dates. We still intend to employ our four SROs at this time. And just to assure the board, Dr. Bidding has started the process to look into adding an SRO when Willow Creek opens. So again, that process has started, and we're working through that. So this is with our current folks that we have on board. So I do recommend the renewal of the School Resource Officer Agreement with the Allen County Sheriff's Department for the 25-26 school year be approved as presented.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vogt, second by Ms. Schlotter. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Up next, I do have an approval for your recommendation of Cedar Canyon Cafeteria Tables. And separated this out to... Normally, we wouldn't even have to have an approval for this, but just wanted to point out just the work that we continue to do with Pulver Cove and our special exemption, their ability to work with us and collaborate. We're actually able to get, I believe it ended up being three cafeteria tables inside of this order with all of the amount that we were able to save. So this is a budget-lined item that was approved for the 26 budget for Cedar Canyon that, again, getting three extra tables at this time is a huge savings for us. So appreciate the work that they did. So I do recommend the purchase of the cafeteria tables for Cedar Canyon for $18,377.99 through Pulver Cove be approved as presented.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Jamison, second by Mr. Vogt. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
And another purchase, again, we're doing the special exemption through Pulver Cove. Dr. Bidding and Dr. Bidding and I have been working with, continue to work with them on using this method, and it's just been great for us. You can see some pretty significant savings there. Cafeteria tables, media center furniture, our large group instruction spaces, the seating throughout the building, so that would be office seating, any other chairs, the office furniture, and then all of the classroom student desks. So this purchase is the major bulk of furniture. Really, from a furniture standpoint, the only thing that will be left would be any specialty like bookcase or something like that that you might have to buy for a specific program. So this is the vast majority of outfitting that building and significantly under budget. So I really, really appreciate it. If you go in there and you look at the line items, we are getting a great deal. So just as a reminder for everybody, especially seeing the total for this, how this works is there is a list price and then the cooperative price. What this exemption is doing is they're saying, hey, we're going to work with Pulver Cove, and we're going to even beat that price that we give everybody else. So really appreciate the work that they do on our behalf. So I do recommend all of these furniture purchases for the cafeteria tables, media center furniture, large group instruction spaces, seating, office furniture, student desk tables, and installation for $1,199,199.94 through Pulver Cove be approved as presented.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Chafee, second by Ms. Schlotter. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Up next, we do have the Willow Creek Wrestling Mats. Just this went slightly above our threshold, so we wanted to make sure that we got that approval. We sent this out and solicited three quotes. We really got one response that could actually do what we wanted to do. In our research, the longevity of these mats, these are expensive. As you can see, the longevity of these is number one. So they are actually making two-sided, so you can flip them over and kind of transition back and forth will extend the life. So do recommend the wrestling match purchase of $62,000 from BSN Sports for Willow Creek be approved as presented.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vogt, second by... Was it Ms. Jamison? Ms. Chafee? All those in... Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you. And the next three things that I have are all connected to our lease hearing today. So these are the final steps for us to be able to go and issue those bonds when we get into February. So up first, we do have the resolution authorizing the execution of amendment to the lease. And really what this is, is this is making... This is a statement stating that we're going to allow the building corporation to actually make the payments. So this is proof that we are going to actually work with the building corporation and do that. Without this assurance, they don't have it, so the bank wouldn't allow us to have the funds to pay our debt service payment. So I do recommend the resolution authorizing the execution of the amendment to the lease be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Schlotter, second by Mr. Vogt. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you. The next resolution is to assign construction bids and contracts to the building corporation. And again, same thing here, where we have to make the statement that we're going to actually assign these and make the payments. In some cases, when you go out to bid, because of the laws and the regulations, you might actually have to assign the contract to the building corporation. So we approve this. That's not the case for us, but we still approve this in the event something were to happen. Really, what this does, the main focal point outside of that is just allowing us to do this with the collateral, which will use the Huntertown site as collateral to be able to allow the building corporation to make those payments. So I do recommend the resolution assigning construction bids and contracts to the building corporation be approved as presented.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vogt, second by Ms. Jamison. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
And finally, this is one that we have with all of our issuances. This is the continuing disclosures. And what this does is state that we're going to actually do what we're required to do, and that is to report to the security. So we actually will go in to the Emma site and post in what we're actually spending, doing, making payments for this. So I do recommend the resolution approving the 11th supplement to master continuing disclosure undertaking and issuance of bonds be approved as presented.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Chafee, second by Mr. Vogt. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
I'm finally done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Basham. Next up is Operations and Safety with Dr. Bidding.
Thank you, President Hathaway, as they queue my computer up on the screen for you. Just a brief update. For Willow Creek, really, the flooring's still kind of the major thing that you see. And so we've got the cafeteria floor. The gym floor is in, and we're going to, here in a little bit, we're going to show you some drone footage, and you'll see the gym floor is in. It's still in its infant stages. It still needs to be kind of finished and striped and things like that. But it's exciting to see the floor in the gymnasium. I know this is crazy, but the thing that I'm probably most excited about, I really want you to watch the windows. It's amazing what windows does to a space. I mean, I guess I've been so used to this for the last year, just having, you know, cardboard or whatever closed off. And so when you watch the drone footage, I think you'll be amazed at just how that natural light coming in, what it does to spaces. And so at this time, we'll queue Dr. Toller's camera, excuse me, computer here for the drone So again, just great progress out there. I know, it's funny, that video is not that long ago, and it was nice to see no snow on the ground at that time. I know Tony, the site superintendent out there, was pretty bummed because he was so far ahead on the pouring of the external concrete, and there are just a few pores left, and he's crushed now because they're not going to be able to get to that like he'd hoped. But inside-wise, you can see the hallway spaces and things that are uncovered now because they literally are shutting those wings off to people to where, I mean, they're kind of already starting some pre-punch kind of list type of things. And so you're starting to see the carpet get back exposed and things. And so, you know, we're ready to where we're going to be able to start adding some technology and things to it. So again, just very exciting to see the progress that's being made out there. And so if you want to click back to my computer, we'll show a couple more. It's interesting when you look at the high school because it's hard to believe that we're almost two years ago, I was showing all these different phases. And so we're almost to enter the last stretch of the high school. And so as you look at the slide up there, the three areas on the screen are three areas that we're going to be taking possession of here over the break coming up. And so as you look, the PLTW and construction area, there probably aren't more excited teachers than a couple of teachers right here because the spaces they've been living in first semester are, well, the PLTW teachers existing in the old tech office. And so it's just, he's going to just fall in love when he goes into that new space over Christmas break. And so those areas will come online. They're actually getting waxed this past weekend. I think they got waxed. And so we take possession of those over break, and students will be moving into the construction PLTW areas there. construction PLTW areas there. The old weight room that we turned into a radio, TV studio, and computer science classrooms, those are actually getting waxed at the end of this week, actually beginning of next week in those areas. And so, again, we'll be taking those spaces over break, moving into those areas, and then finally, on the west side of the building, kind of a multipurpose room, two classrooms sitting there, and a couple of science rooms, and again, finishing touches being put on in the last week here, and we'll be taking possession of those spaces as well over break. And so, what that leaves us really, going into the spring of '26, as we hit the home stretch, is the second floor, library area, and then the old radio and TV studio, which will be going into an agriculture grow area, and then just some miscellaneous kind of items, asphalt and some things on the outside. And so again, this area is getting constructed and renovated right now, and it's set to be turned into, it's, you know, actually, there are things going into those spaces as we speak, but just the finishes and how they're going to be done, be more closely to spring break. But six classrooms and then four breakout rooms, and some much-needed thoroughfare hallways for interconnectivity in that upstairs is going to be just incredible for that side of the building. And so again, the last space that they're going to be moving into over break, and kind of the home stretch here, is the old radio, TV. So, kind of a, we're going to be moving out the front door, and they're going to be hammering some walls as we're moving out over break. They're going to be changing that space, will be connected to the rest of the agricultural areas and provide a nice space. If you look at those spaces, we've got a small food science lab, we've got a general classroom, we've got a small garage machine kind of setting. What we really lack is an ability to grow, and some have some, so when you look at those principals' classes of agriculture, you think of animal science, you think of some mechanic stuff, you think of food science, we really don't have a plant soil area that the principals' classes can exist in. And so, you can see in that area, there is an interconnective stair, so all of these areas can be kind of interwoven, and so, pretty excited to get this, you know, won't be a large space, but it'll be a nice space for another branch of our agricultural classes that are very popular at Carroll High School. And so, again, kind of finals week wraps up next week, we're going to be moving this equipment into the new radio, TV space, and then this space is kind of the last demo renovated space coming online. And finally, just excited with the approvals tonight, we look to hopefully break ground. I know we've got Austin in the audience from FCI, we're looking to hope to break ground for the Transportation Center, hopefully in February, and we'll get rolling on that. So, I will take any questions if you have them.
Any questions?
I have one that's unrelated, but I remembered it. The auditorium, did we get that floor fixed and all that? That was a none related to this project, we had to do part of this project to get the pipe moved, it was above the overhead.
So actually, it was more of the curtains than anything, as it was before. And so, actually, one of the things that Mr. Basham, we're to the point of the project now, that the, we get the, there's a couple things that need to be done with this agriculture, radio, TV conversion, and as anyone who's ever done a home remodel, there's always the surprise factor when you open something up. And so, and thus, in the world of construction, it's called contingency funds. And so, you know, we had a huge contingency hit on the lift station, but it's going to set the high school up for years to come. We are to the point where we really believe, after the first of the year, when they open up a couple of walls, if no more surprises hit us, we're in a place to have, we really believe we're coming in under on the high school with the construction contingency. And we've kind of earmarked a couple of projects to kind of wrap up the high school. One of them would be, we did the lighting, we've already done the lighting, pretty excited about updating the lighting in the auditorium, but curtains and kind of a movable screen and the planetarium bulb are two things we've always kind of had on our wish list, that if we have some construction contingency money, you know, those things are years and years old, that if we can update. And so we really believe, once we get through the initial, hey, let's knock this wall and make sure there's no pipe surprising us, we really believe we're going to have the money to get the curtains, get a movable screen, not by hand, electronic movable screen, and the planetarium bulb are the three things we kind of really want to finish off some things with. So, yes, to answer your question, we sure hope so.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I was just going to mention that maybe after the holidays, we could schedule a tour for the Board to get to see these spaces, the new spaces, and then maybe once again, after spring break, or whenever that last phase is fully accomplished and teachers have been able to move in, I'd love to get to see those firsthand.
Absolutely. Love to show you off.
I do love the video, the drone video that you give as well for Willow Creek, so thank you for that.
That's amazing. All right, anything else? Okay, thank you. Next up is Board Comments. Are there any Board comments?
Wish everybody Merry Christmas.
Yes, and take away.
I wanted to make sure to take time to thank Mrs. Valdez and Mr. Barker and our leadership team for all of your effort that you've put into helping present our rebalancing options to our community. I know, looking through the presentation, I really appreciated the summation at the end. It helped me be able to visualize the different guiding principles and see how those are impacted by each of the plans. I just wanted to say a genuine thank you for all the time and effort you've put into making that user-friendly for our community and also to our Board. I want to thank Mr. Basham for his work with USI and Pulver Cove. Just roughly speaking, I think it was just under maybe $400,000 savings between those two combined, from what's expected. And so for our taxpayers and community, we talk about effort and time made, just really value that substantial savings, so thank you for that. And my last one, just with the inclement weather and driving my kiddos to and from practices, whether it's early morning or later in the evening, to see our custodial staff working diligently to clean our parking lots and making sure our sidewalks are safe, it's been a little bit of a rough start, I think, to our winter, but they've risen to the occasion, and I just want to say a genuine thank you to that staff, and also to our teachers, the rest of our staff, and even our parents. This time of year, I think about our concerts and musicals, classroom celebrations, just so many extra experiences that our kids get to have, and those are all made possible because of our teachers and staff and even our parents. I just want to say thank you for that as well.
Yeah, thank you. Again, like, it's hard to believe this is the last board meeting of the year, so I just wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, and hope you all have a wonderful and relaxing break. So, I'll turn it over now to Superintendent Barker.
I have a few comments tonight. Number one, I'm happy to report that the Northwest Allen County Schools Education Foundation has been legally established. So I'll be making an update about that at our next school board meeting. A few other updates that are coming in the next meeting, we will add legislative updates to our agenda, as we do every year, since they are already in session. We will have an update to some school board policies, if I can get some time from Mr. Vogt and Mrs. Schlotter to go through those. And then as well, we will, as a reminder, we'll have our annual reorganization meeting at that first meeting on January 12th that we're legally required to do each year. And finally, like all of you, I'm reminded at this time of the year just how fortunate I am. As we saw tonight, our students continue to be inspiring and do amazing things every day, and they've continued to do that on so many different programs and the way that they work each day in school. And I just want to say a thank you to our families who support us, to the Board for your steady guidance, and wish everyone Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
All right. Our next regular board meeting is currently scheduled for January 12th, 2026, at the Ronald D. Felger Boardroom in the Administration Center. That being said, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Vogt, second by Ms. Schlotter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all, and have a great evening.